Good evening. I call it order this February 16th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and would ask the city secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Light.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me for a moment of silence? Thank you. And would you join the city council and me in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our Sergeant arms tonight is Lieutenant Krista Long. Lieutenant, I don't see her, but she's close by. Tonight's agenda is comprised of two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda, and it's always the practice of this council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda will be enacted with one motion unless a city council member requests an item to be removed, and at that time we'll consider that item individually. Following the consent agenda, we'll go back then to the general agenda where we have a number of public hearings, economic development matters, some UDO text amendments, and a couple of grant applications there. So without objection, we'll go to the consent agenda, and would ask the council members if there are any items to be pulled off.
C2.
C20.
C15.
Do you balance, motion to balance up the...
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the balance of the consent agenda. All favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item C2.
Item C2. Resolution authorizing the purchase of property at 7836 North Point Boulevard as a site for Police District 100 in the North Ward.
Councilmember Taylor, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, fellow citizens. I just wanted to give you a quick update on where we are with our concept to move forward with the district, three district police officers. The council in September of 2013 decided to move forward with this concept. We've already purchased one particular facility on Walltown Street, the old Lucia Building. This item gives us the authority and the ability to purchase our second out of three facilities for district police office. We were initially looking at the former McDonald's building close to North Point. I know a lot of you know where that is. But we've landed on what staff and what the council feels is a better facility at 7836 North Point Boulevard. We're looking at a purchase price of $475,000, and I believe this office and the other ones that we will purchase and that we've already purchased will go a long ways towards, you know, reducing crime in our communities and helping with our citizen police contact. I just wanted you to be aware of our progress on this issue. Mayor, members of the council, this item was approved unanimously by both finance and public safety. Now move for approval at this time.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item C15.
Item C15. Consideration of amendments to the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget ordinances for the city of Winston-Salem recommended by the Finance Committee. A. Ordinance amending the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the fiscal year 2014-2015, and B. Ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the fiscal year 2014-2015.
Councilmember Clark.
Yeah, just briefly. Lee, I'll direct this here. I don't see Ms. Montgomery here, unless she's hiding somewhere. Anyway, related to this, I would appreciate it some future date, and you don't need to do it next month, but to bring forward to the Finance Committee some type of cash flow projections for the bond money over the next five, six years. This happens to be one specific area, which is the debt service, but I'd like to see kind of the overall cash.
Be glad to do that. We're working on that.
Okay.
If we can bring that, probably next month.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes, and this is indirectly, Mr. City Manager, since we have been talking about the bond in quite a lot of our meetings, would you please also share just we've been committed to the citizens with this bond that just passed?
Yes, Councilmember Burke. Mr. Turner and I were just talking this morning. We have, after tonight's meeting, council will have awarded about $8 million in professional services contracts for architects, engineers, transportation planners, and out of that $8 million, 25% has been awarded to minority and women businesses, and all $8 million, I believe, Mr. Turner, is awarded to local companies.
All right.
Local. That's great.
Very good. Very good. Councilmember Clark, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion on number C15.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item C20.
Item C20. Ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the City Code relating to sanitation recommended by the Public Works Committee.
Councilmember Light.
I just wanted to take the opportunity for the public and the audience and on TV to hear about this because it's going to be a great education piece. So I don't see Mr. Taylor, but perhaps Mr. Turner.
Madam Chairman, excuse me. Councilmember Light, members of the council. The city has a very effective recycling program, but one of the side effects of that are that we do see significant contamination on occasion, and so what this program is going to do is allow us to better control contamination of recyclables that get into the system that negatively affect not only the machinery, but also the revenue and the benefit or the usefulness of the recycled materials. We will have an education campaign to tell people about the new restrictions, but this will actually implement restrictions so that if we have bad performers, people who don't comply with the restrictions and rules about recycling, then we do have the right to withdraw that service.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yeah, and I'd just note that during the briefing committee, it was pointed out that Winston-Salem still has a relatively low contamination rate compared to other cities. It has been rising, though frankly, as participation rises even further in the program. And this is a method for giving us a chance to reinforce our educational effort. The specific provision provides that if a notice of violation of the ordinance of what you can put in recycling is given to a location three times within a 12-month period, then it can be discontinued at that location. So this is, this particular tool is aimed at just the folks who won't listen. For the folks who are making good faith errors, we'll catch that through the education program. We'll help people continue to participate at a high and even increasing rate.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke, excuse me, Clark.
Yeah, and bear in mind, we're not talking about people that are putting in, and I'll just use my example, one of these is recyclable and one isn't. This one happens to be, this one isn't. That's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about here are people that are throwing their trash in the recycling. And it was mentioned last week, we've had everything from diapers to animal carcasses in the recycling. So again, the blue is for the recycling, the brown one is for your household trash. And if people just differentiate between that, we won't have a problem. Thank you.
Councilmember Light, you ready for a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second. No discussion. Councilmember Adams.
Yes, one more thing. I did catch a commercial or informational type on Channel 13 today, Mr. McNeil, telling people what they can. City Savvy, Savvy City? What is it?
City Savvy.
City Savvy. And I thought it was extremely well done. What everybody needs to understand again is we're talking about an income stream that we receive from waste management towards, you know, the general funds of the city of Winston-Salem. So there's another reason why we're so proactive about this. We're going to, as Mr. Turner and his staff and them go forward, they're going to initiate other ways that we can educate citizens as to what can go in the recycling bin and what can't. As Councilmember Clark said, we just have some people that are just throwing everything in the recycling bin, and it's contaminating the stream, which causes us to lose money as a city. So again, good job. We're looking forward to hearing the outcome of the new initiatives going forward.
All favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That is unanimous. Thank you. We'll go back to the general agenda now, which is comprised of a UDO text amendment. There's an item designating certain property as a historic landmark, an item approving a request for financial assistance, an item authorizing the city to apply for a creative give-back grant, an item authorizing the award of grant funds to United Way of Forsyth County, an item setting the date for a public hearing on a petition to close or abandon an alleyway, as well as a public comment period. The text amendment, the historic landmark item, and the request for financial assistance are listed as public hearings. When these public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one wishes to speak, the city council will consider the item and will take action there, too. Ms. Phillips, may we have the first item?
Item G1. Public hearing on ordinance amending Chapter B of the Unified Development ordinances to amend transmission tower regulations in residential zoning districts, UDO 254. Proposal of city-county planning and development services staff recommended by the planning board.
Kirk Erickson's going to give us a brief presentation on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
The petitioner on this item is actually the city council's General Government Committee, and this request would amend transmission tower regulations in residential zoning. As you all remember, in September of last year, the council approved a text amendment which revised the recently adopted transmission tower ordinances that you all worked on in the earlier part of 2014 to better define where existing trees would be saved when towers were proposed in tree stands. While discussing that item at the General Government Committee, council requested the staff put together an ordinance that would also deal with some other issues the council had with how towers had been handled thus far. Those three issues were reducing the maximum height of residential towers from 199 to 150 feet, placing greater limits on when monopine and monopole towers would be allowed in residential areas, and making unipoles, more colloquially known as slick sticks, the preferred tower type in residential areas. And just to refresh everyone's memory, this slide illustrates those three towers that we were talking about. The unipoles on the left of the slide were council's, or the committee's, preferred tower type to see in most residential situations. They're fairly innocuous and look much like a flagpole without the flag. The tower in the middle, the monopine, looks like a faux pine tree with the antennas concealed in the metal branches. And the tower on the right of the slide is monopole, which again, it's not as cumbersome as a lattice-type tower that you'd see in more commercial areas with an exposed structure. It's much like a unipole, except with the exposed antenna on the top of the tower instead of on the inside. So just to give you a little more detail, again, unipoles, those flagless flagpoles, are the preferred tower type in all residential areas, and only unipoles or monopines would be allowed in tree stands where more than half of the trees are evergreen. This is because those monopines are designed to look like trees, and the evergreens are going to keep their leaves and conceal that tower better than other types of tree situations would. If a petitioner did want to do a monopine, it would still require them to demonstrate to council that this would be compatible in the same way that a unipole would. So the language states that unipoles are preferred, but this gives them another alternative. On the other hand, only unipole or monopole towers would be allowed where most of the trees are deciduous, and that's because council expressed some concern that if you have all the trees lose their leaves, and suddenly you have one tree that still has its leaves, it's going to stand out as not being a real tree at all. So that's what this ordinance tries to prevent happening. Overall, staff believes that the proposed standards should reduce the visual impact of transmission towers on residential areas while still allowing for a new telecommunications infrastructure in neighborhoods. The planning board held a public hearing in December 11th on this item and recommended approval. There was no significant discussion at that time, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Erickson, Mr. Clark?
Do you know the difference between the unipole and the monopole as far as the capacity?
The unipole definitely has a reduced capacity compared to the monopole. I've heard from some folks in the industry that since it has its antenna arrays inside the structure, that it takes about double the space to store those as if it was on the outside. But I don't have an exact proportional relationship between a unipole can hold this many antennas or carriers and a monopine or monopole.
See, I mean, that's critical because if we don't watch out, we're going to have a lot of unipoles where you could have just a few monopoles.
And that was something that we did talk about with the General Government Committee on this item, was there was a recognition that if you do promote the unipole as the preferred type, you will have more of those towers than if you allowed a wider array of towers that might be more visually obtrusive.
And so people, I mean, you know, the law of unintended consequences, we may actually be voting for more poles here. Matter of fact, we are. And I just think that's a critical number we need to have before I could vote for this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Erickson. This is public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard related to this item, this UDO text amendment related transmission towers? All right, seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. I recognize Councilmember Light, the Chairman of the, our Community Development Housing General Government Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Councilmember Montgomery?
One thing I would say is I remember and recall our discussion on this when we came before, as well as some discussion that's taken place in the General Government Committee. But I do believe that the number that Councilmember Clark requested is something that is vital information in the process of us considering this and looking at where we are with this process. And that's a piece of information that I would like to have.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yeah, certainly Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Montgomery raise a fair point, and I think that we should ask for that information and get it for further deliberation. Frankly, it's not critical to my vote, and this is why. This is a question of equity for residential areas. All the residential areas should be entitled to preferred unipole. This doesn't limit what takes place in non-residential areas. You can still have the monopoles there. I do not see it as a net benefit to have fewer neighborhoods more adversely impacted. I think that we should treat all neighborhoods alike in this respect. It's just a visual consideration, and they should all be entitled to the consideration of having a unipole as preferred, therefore I'm prepared to support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Over the past several months, this has been in the General Government Committee for quite a while. It, we've changed it, edited, modified, but one thing is clear that we did do. We made sure that the neighborhood associations, neighborhood alliance, and others, and the Chair of the General Government Committee, Councilmember Light, and others, even Councilmember Bessie when he was Chair, interacted with them, and they came to our meetings, and basically, this is the one that we landed on with their, them feeding into it with their input. That's another reason, as Councilmember Bessie said, we've gone this route. The neighborhoods have basically spoken in their associations, and this is what they want. Again, this is neighborhoods, residential. This is not commercial. Commercial can have as many monopines and monopoles as they want, but we're trying to, again, work with the neighborhoods as to what they want to see in their communities.
Councilmember McIntosh.
I'm still not clear, and maybe Kirk can answer this for me, but there's, under the monopine versus monopole, there's an opportunity for the contractor to petition us for one versus the other?
Yes. What this would do, this limits the situations where basically the monopine or the monopole would be allowed. Under what you all currently have on the books, let's say someone has a tree stand, regardless of what type of trees are in it now, they can either petition for a unipole, a monopole, or a monopine. It was the General Government's Committee's prime concern that some of these towers are more impactful on others due to what types of trees and how they lose their leaves over time. So under this scenario, again, if you had the primarily evergreen grove of trees, then you can either do the slick stick or the faux pine tree. And if you have deciduous trees that lose their leaves, then you're not allowed to do that faux pine tree anymore because that would just stand out too much as a cell tower once those, the leaves of the real trees are off.
But the fact that there's a, that there's a choice that can be made there, is that the basis for that is thinking that the neighborhood associations or neighbors would petition council or committees, and then we would make that call based on their choice?
Yes, and as you, as you all remember, there's also some ordinance language that you adopted last year that requires tower petitioners in residential areas to have community meetings.
Right.
Hopefully that information would be teased out during those community meetings as well. But the language is written so that basically the presumption is you will be doing a unipole unless you can demonstrate to the council that your alternative choice is as good or better than the effect of a unipole. And you'll also remember that council requires photo simulations, so they would have to demonstrate through their photo simulations the impact that those alternative towers would have would be minimal.
Right. Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to say that the committee has worked hard, and at one of the meetings, I commended the chairman for doing a lot of research and making sure that we understood clearly what the committee was making a recommendation. And again, I want to commend you, and thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. All right, all favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Here are two noes. The motion passes 6 to 2 with Councilmember Clark, Councilmember Montgomery voting no. Item 2.
Item G2. Public hearing on ordinance designating certain property as a historic landmark. The Charles A. Cooper House, 411 South Main Street located in the South Ward, recommended by Community Development Housing General Government Committee.
Michelle McCullough's going to give us a brief rundown on this before we have the public hearing.
I'm not as technically savvy as my coworker Kirk, so give me...
It's a historic laptop there.
I'm used to slides. There we go, there we go. Mayor, Mayor, pro temps, city council members, thank you for allowing me to come this evening. We are here to talk about one of our local historic landmark designations. Because we don't do these all the time, I'm going to give you a very brief, because I know the snow is coming down, synopsis of that program, and then we'll go over the one that's up for your consideration tonight. The landmark program is a program authorized to us by the state statute. Properties that become a landmark property do have to go by the architectural guides and the guidelines that they get and receive, and do have to go before the Historic Resource Commission to make any changes to the designated portions. Property owners of these local historic landmarks can apply for up to a 50% property tax deferral on designated portions of the property in sight. Preserving our historic fabric is the prime purpose for this program so that we maintain and keep some of our history. The tax deferral just enables the owners of these structures to do that for us. And currently, we have 129 local historic landmark properties. The property under consideration this evening is the Charles A. Cooper House located at 411 South Main Street in Winston-Salem. The applicant was Stephen and Patricia Cole. The Charles A. Cooper House is a building that was reconstructed, it's a reconstruction of the Charles A. Cooper House to its appearance in 1840. It is located in Old Salem. The original house was removed around the early 1900s and replaced with a duplex. Fortunately, in 2008, the duplex was removed, and then the house was reconstructed with the assistance of Old Salem Historic Districts and Old Salem Inc. And John Larson is here, just in case you have any specific questions, but using their archaeological evidence, the Meridian Archives, and all of their professional knowledge to bring this house back to that 1840s, photographs, everything they had, they bring it out, and they had to present that to the Historic Resource Commission, and it was a pile about this deck. So they really researched these when they reconstructed them. The State Historic Preservation Office sent a letter to the Historic Resource Commission saying that we had enough information to make such a decision, and on January 7th, the Historic Resource Commission recommended for approval. They held a public hearing that the Charles A. Cooper House be designated just the exterior of the property and the site it's located on. Wow. This is where it's located in Old Salem. I'm not quite sure where the map went to. It was there a minute ago when I, when I left my office. So this is a historic view of the property, so you can see what it looked like around 1840. This is what the historic building looks like today, the reconstruction, and this is the rear of the structure.
Any questions, Ms. McCullough? Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you so much. When you say that in the, within the action request form, it says for the exterior of the property, and then it says in the last sentence of the third paragraph, the current value of the property and the tax office would calculate the tax of the value based on the amount of the building that is designated. If the outside exterior is the designate, designated part of it, then are we talking about the whole amount, or are we talking about...
Right.
The whole amount?
We have actually been educated about that. The county tax assessor came to the last Historic Resource Commission meeting. And what it is, is why we say now up to 50% because if you just designate the exterior of a structure, the tax assessor looks at what historic portion was, and they just give a percentage for that feature. So it ends up being, it could in some cases be considerably lower than 50%, not including the interior spaces. So it is not an automatic 50%. So in this case, they will not get 50%. They will get a portion of that. I love to ask the tax assessor if I can have that number. He does not like to give that to me until we, until we actually do this process, and it's a lot of hard work, as some of you know, to get that number. But it is only on that portion, and they have this whole formula they go through at the tax assessor's office. We are about one of three cities that do it this way. Some cities in North Carolina just get 50% no matter what. But Charlotte, and I think it's Statesville, Statesville or Salisbury, do it the same way. Their tax assessors, you know, view it the same way ours does.
How much of the original structure is still in place even though they did the add-on on the back?
It is a reconstruction. It is an entire reconstruction.
It's an entire reconstruction.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Montgomery?
And this property, the, who the Coles own, they live in the property?
No, not currently. They are actually still finishing the interior. They do not live in it currently.
So what will be the use of the property?
Eventually residential.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
So these, these kind of projects, and whether or not this qualifies is by and large a function of state legislature and/or the Department of the Interior, correct? So whether or not it architecturally qualifies isn't really what we're talking about.
Well, and what we're, just so you know, 14 other structures in Old Salem that have been reconstructions have gone through this very same process and have been landmarked.
Then there's no wiggle room in terms of what's allowable through the statement?
No, there's a criteria that the HRC goes through and looks at and makes sure they meet it. And that's why I said they really had to turn in a packet of material for us to go through. And working with Old Salem, they have their list of criteria when they do a reconstruction. So reconstructions sometimes go through a double duty, you know, to get on this list. It's not something we take very lightly because you don't want every building to be on there.
Right. Thank you. Councilmember Clark, sorry.
Yeah. You don't have to do it tonight, but we also voted on the Old Reynolds Building to do the exterior as well.
That was withdrawn, and I'm sorry, there is a little bit on here. You'll be seeing that very soon.
Okay, but it's coming, okay.
But it's coming, yeah.
I would just be curious whenever you find out what percent of a house is the exterior.
Right.
Because obviously, the inside of this house is brand-new.
Right.
With granite countertops and all that. That's certainly not historic. But I would just be curious how they, what they come up with as to the value, and if and when we do the Reynolds Building, I'd be curious what they come up with the value as far as the exterior.
And I will, spoil alert, the Reynolds Building has gone back through the HRC and will be coming 100% interior, exterior in sight. So just giving that...
Well, then, just on this one, when you find out?
But by that time, we should know about this property, and I can give you a couple other examples if you'd like them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this particular designation? John Larson, I see you coming forward. Try to give your name and address for the record, please, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Absolutely. My name is John Larson, Old Salem Incorporated, 600 South Main Street. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my apologies that I have to substitute for Reagan Fohl and the President. I happen to live closer, and I get to walk in this evening. In 1948, this council, or your predecessors, created an ordinance for historic properties or historic district zoning. It was the first one ever authorized in the state of North Carolina. In fact, it wasn't authorized by any legislation, enabling legislation. But the charge was to restore, protect, preserve the historic part of the town, Old Salem. Immediately, that began to run into some problems, and in 1950, Old Salem Incorporated that I worked for was established, charged to be proactive in that effort to restore the town. And subsequently, for the last 65 years, Old Salem has systematically sought to restore, reconstruct, preserve the town of Salem. The most recent project you have before you this evening is the Charles Alexander Cooper House. If you drive down Liberty Street, past the coffee shop, coffee pot, you're sure to see it because it has become a major anchor on the north end of the historic district. And Mr. Cole... And Mr. Cole has done an extraordinary job based on the archaeological work that we had done, historical research that we had performed, the drawings and specifications we provided him for exterior appearance, to help restore Main Street to its early appearance by adding this building back into the landscape. And we appreciate your consideration of this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Any questions I can answer, be pleased to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Light.
I move approval.
Second. Motion second, Councilmember Montgomery?
I'd make comments similar to ones I make on these type of, of assignments on the local historic landmark designation. And that is always assessing and looking for me in terms of the impact that these properties have on our community as a city. And looking, and normally for me, a residential property, a property that'll be used for a residence is something that I would normally not support, because we've had others that have come since my time on council, and I didn't support it in issues specific as being used as a residence. But the location of this property is set aside as being something that is different for this consideration, the fact of where it's located in Old Salem, and the fact that individuals come and travel to our community and our city for the fact of being able to enjoy what takes place in Old Salem. And so I want to make it clear, because I have not supported properties that will, that are used for residence, that the reason that I would support this is because of the fact that this is a part of the fabric of Old Salem and contributes to what we have here as a hallmark and a jewel in Old Salem.
Thank you. All favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? That is unanimous, thank you. Item three?
Item G3, Consideration of Items Related to the Whittaker Park Development Authority Incorporated, recommended by the Finance Committee. A, Public Hearing and Resolution Approving Financial Assistance to Whittaker Park Development Authority Incorporated, and B, Ordinance Amending the Project Budget Ordinance for the Fiscal Year 2014-2015.
Before we do the public hearing, I'll ask Assistant City Manager Page to give us just a brief comment about this proposed economic development project.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is a request for $200,000 assistance to develop wet lab space in Whittaker Park. The request is coming from the Whittaker Park Development Authority as part of the requirement for the assistance they would have, both obligations to create new jobs and investment in the park. They're proposing to invest approximately $2.5 million to outfit the park, to create new wet lab space, to recruit new companies or growing companies into the new research park space. Space will be located in Whittaker Park, it's the old building 630-2, which is at the corner of Shorfeld Drive and 32nd Street. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Page? Thank you, Mr. Page. This is a public hearing, is there anyone in council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed economic development project? Thank you very much, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and I guess before we move forward, I think Councilmember Adams and I would probably just want to acknowledge that she and I are members of the Whittaker Park Development Authority Board, but that is a nonprofit development authority, and of course, there's no remuneration that comes back to anybody on that board, so just for the record, put that on there. And I'd recognize Councilmember Clark, Chairman Finance Committee?
I'll move approval, this is a second, I would like my comment.
One second, Councilmember Clark, go ahead.
Just very briefly, I first want to publicly thank RJ Reynolds for donating a substantial portion of the Whittaker Park facility to the Whittaker Park Development Authority, of which the mayor and Councilman Adams serve on. This is the first building, there is an immediate demand for this space, is why it has been broken out and moved forward quicker. The rest of the buildings and land that are coming are going to come in the next 18 to 24 months. I think it is a wonderful potential, I think it is certainly a, a deal-changing event for this city to have 1.7 million square feet and 120 acres of property given essentially to the community. There is going to have to be a little money spent on upfitting and separating utilities, things of that sort, but on a square foot basis, it's the best deal anyone's ever gotten. And there is an immediate demand for wet space, wet lab space, which is what this is, so I enthusiastically endorse it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Bethany?
Yeah, I'd just like to note that this, there were different types of economic development projects that come before us for consideration. This is a classic variety in which by, by creating new wet lab space to recruit new technology companies, we are recruiting net new economic activity and jobs to the area. It's not like retail where you're just shifting it around from place to place, this is bringing in net new activity in a substantial way to the region.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams.
Yes, again, thank you, Mayor. To Councilmember Clark's comments, this is a game changer for the city of Winston-Salem again. Here, we all know and remember when the, as we say, when the building went dark. We all hoped that it would become light again, and the economic activity that took place on the north end of town was the very heartbeat of the city of Winston-Salem, when you're talking about over 10,000 jobs and people moving every day, all day. When Whittaker Park went dark, a lot of those small businesses and suppliers, they went dark as well. So with us growing in innovation and technology, we've had some other initiatives on the board, such as the Union Park area, Union Cross area, but we're running out of space. Luckily, again, we have this wonderful piece of property, this real estate, that we can bring economic vitality to the north end of town and create hopefully thousands of jobs in the next five to 10 years to our city. Again, I want to commend RJ Reynolds for thinking enough, or Reynolds America, to give it back to the city in a sense that we'll be able to again affect the quality of life of our citizens.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, I'm very pleased that RJ Reynolds would do what they've done, but this city, some of the residents have worked very hard and to build RJ Reynolds, the infrastructure that you see, the kinds of jobs that some of the people did in this city years ago. I would also say that I don't care if we're giving $1 of the taxpayers' dollars to anyone, that I feel that we need to make sure that we give jobs to as many people as we can in the city of Winston-Salem. I've said with pride on many occasions, with the economics like it is, we have some of the smartest people in this city. They have worked and been a part of international things. So please, whomever is speaking with them, that we will get some jobs. And also, I am the one who emphasizes important, we have one woman who's going to sit on that, but there are other women who can do the job. And I think the mayor stated that we will be hearing more about the plan, and I would like to see not only one black female, I would also let you know, we have diversity, we have Asians in this area, and it should show the diversity. When you mirror this community, then I say we have, we're making progress. Now, Mr. Mayor, I expect you to be very aggressive and make sure that is understood.
We are working hard on that. Councilmember McIntosh?
I'll keep it short, most of what I was going to say has already been said, but one thing I do want to emphasize on, this site, by fact, that it's not a greenfield site, that it's a revitalization effort, I think it makes it even that much better a win for Winston-Salem. The jobs and the homeowners that will move towards this to revitalize your ward and my ward, which is right next door.
That's right.
But the city as a whole, so I, to me, it's just, it's so nice to have this happen where we don't have to go out and absorb farms and land, green space on the outside of cities. Wonderful.
Great, certainly repurposing these buildings is good for, for our community, it's good for that area of the city. And at one time, 16,000 more people are working there, and our economic analysis, we believe we can add back about 15,000 over the next 15 years, so we'll make a big, good step there. All favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? That's unanimous, thank you. Item four?
Item G4, Resolution Authorizing the City to Apply for the Creative Give Back Grant from Creative Economic Development Consulting. Finance Committee forwarded this item to council with two in favor and none opposed, and one abstaining.
Recognize Councilmember Clark, if he's...
I have some questions.
Okay.
Can we do that first?
Why don't we get a motion, somebody want to make a motion on this?
I move that we accept the resolution authorizing us to apply for the Creative Give Back Grant.
Second, okay, then, go ahead, Councilmember Clark.
And I guess directly, Mr. Page, can you tell us a little bit who the Creative Economic Development Consulting are?
They are a for-profit consulting firm located just to the north of us, I think they're in Stokes County. And once, they've been in business for about two years, several professional economic developers. But every year, what they do is offer a free service to some of their customers, and as part of this service that they offer, it's a competitive process where communities can compete for this grant to come in for consultational services.
Okay, so we're not guaranteed, we're simply submitting an application.
We submit an application.
Do you have any idea, I'm a little concerned we're appropriating money, an unspecified amount for something that's being given to us, did they give you indication of what their out-of-pocket cost would be?
The only expenses would be travel, copies, but all, all of their services are free.
But they didn't give you any estimate on, on what that would be?
Whoever the winning company or winning community is, prior to any work starting, they would sit down and negotiate what that fee would be, but they couldn't do it for the communities yet, because they don't know which were the application.
Okay.
So we'll get another bite at this apple, won't we?
Correct.
I have other comments, but I'll let some other folks.
Anybody else kind of, I believe you might be there alone.
Okay. I have three issues with this, and I'm not going to be supporting it. Number one, well, you made me feel a little bit bad about number one, but we're, we're applying for something that's free, but we're appropriating money for it. Number two is, we're basically asking someone to research an industry that does not exist in this community, and based on the research I was sent, I don't think it exists in this country. The references I got reference Bangladesh and the Virgin Islands. We're also doing this to train the hardcore unemployed, and I think if we really want a program to train the hardcore unemployed, it ought to be for jobs that exist in this community now. Further, I am very concerned that right around the corner is a request from the city to get into the hydroponic farming industry. And by the way, what this issue you've got, it's, it's animal and plants, the animals, basically fish generate nitrogen as they breathe, the plants take the nitrogen out of the water, and you grow vegetables with it. So there's, is a symbiotic relationship there, but I just don't think we're being fair to the chronically unemployed to train them for something for which there are no jobs currently anywhere about this. And I think, and I do appreciate these people volunteering their services, and it'd be interesting to see what they come up with, but if we're looking for programs to train the chronically unemployed, I suggest we check with the Employment Security Commission and folks like us, and find out what in this community jobs are going unfilled, and let's think about training folks for that.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Councilmember Clark, as I said in committee, we can agree to disagree on this one.
No problem.
I support this one wholeheartedly, with all my heart. Most of us, if any of us, I grew up with parents that grew up on farms, both sides, grandparents. Every summer, they shipped me and my sisters and brothers to the farm the day after school got out, until the day before school started. I have never gone hungry a day in my life. I don't even know what hunger is, but I know a lot of people in this community that are. I know that the data shows that Winston-Salem Forsyth County, the 12th Congressional District, is one of the most poverty areas of the state and the East Coast. I know that even though we have all these initiatives around here to take care of that, there is still much work to be done. Part of the new deal with our legislature and Congress and everyone is that we can no longer think that the programs and things that we've been doing in the past work all the time. They're good, but we've got to start thinking out of the box, how do we feed people that cannot pay the prices that some of us pay at the Whole Foods and the Harris Teeters and those type places? Most of our population in the urban core are urban poor. There are single moms, seniors that are on limited incomes, poor people living on less than $15,000 a year. This proposal that we're asking the, the council to support isn't about us using any money right now, it's about putting our name in the hat and coming up with our grant proposal like we do on all other grants that we apply, to come up with something innovative and new. But Councilmember Clark spoke and said that he feels like we're losing our money, or it's useless to try to train people on something that's useless. I disagree with him, because in the hydroponics, aquaponics technology, it's more like being a lab technician. For those of you that don't know, please go out and Google it, and you'll see. I think what we're talking about is a comprehensive program here that will not only train those people who are hard to place, those are people that are, have been reincarcerated, people that don't have college degrees and that sort of thing, but also, we're talking about a farm-to-table type process here. We're talking about growing the food, running the process and the technology, providing food to the people in the inner city at a most cost-productive amount of money that benefits all. We're talking about training people also in the skill sets of learning how to go to work, be productive in their communities, and also learn how to run their own businesses. We're talking about teaching a lot of single moms and seniors how to prepare fresh food locally. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about growing acres of corn or that sort of thing, it doesn't work that way right now. But if we can provide them, again, a techno, a training, working in cooperation with other nonprofits, other agencies, Forsyth Tech, and train people how to do this, I believe that we have something. And all we gotta do, just like Hope Six, Mayor, all we needed was $10,000 to apply for Hope Six. And the Commission of Housing Authority, my counterparts, didn't agree with me, but I told them, just give, let's get the 10,000 and go get the money. We did it. We got not just one, as Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem know, we got two. We're asking our staff to go and apply for the grant. That's all we're asking for, and I will be supporting this, and I hope that my fellow council members will support this as well.
I think it's interesting, and just the last month, I've had two groups come to see me about this whole issue, so it is something, Councilmember Clark, that is kind of moving forward there, but the world's most expensive tomato is grown this way. All right. See, Councilmember Montgomery, then Councilmember Taylor, and Councilmember Bethany?
I reminded it for those of y'all who watched the Super Bowl, there was a commercial that came on during the Super Bowl, and during that commercial, it was one in which you saw individuals going back to the beginning of email and internet. And at the time, they were sitting around, they were looking at each other, and they were saying and asking the question, what are we going to do with this @ thing? What does this thing mean for us to do? And they fast-forwarded through time and back to this place when understanding that this is what everybody uses, and this is where we are. I say that to say that we, as a community, just made a decision on council to approve dollars for an economic development at Whittaker Park. And we talk about potential 15,000 new jobs in that, in that location, but the fact of the matter is that when we look at population growth versus job growth, that those are not enough jobs. We have to continue to look in our community on where we can continue to increase our opportunities for jobs, and we have an, we have an obligation as a council to look in every avenue that has the potential to produce jobs for us. And right now, we may look, be looking at it from a standpoint as people looked at technologies and years ago, and then 10 years from now, we look back and say we were able to look at something that benefited our community very much well. And the fact of the matter is that this is only going to produce an opportunity for us to study the issue, bring us back information, and then we can make decisions based upon facts that we received from that. And so with that being said, I think any dollars that are spent associated with that for expenses are dollars well-spent to see if this is something that can add to the economic vitality of our community.
Councilmember Taylor?
Well, I think Councilmember Montgomery just stole all of my thunder. So, Mr. Page, I'll just ask a direct question. This item does not allocate at this time any funding, it just gives staff permission to move forward with applying for the grant.
That is correct, sir.
I, I think at the end of the day, we're the city of arts and innovation, we have to be who we say that we are. This gives us the ability to train some folks, put some people to work, and I know some people in this community that are doing very, extremely well, but there are some people in this community who are hurting, who are looking for a chance to get back on their feet, and if this item does it for 10 people, I think it's well-invested, so I'll be supporting it.
Okay, Councilmember Bethany?
Most of my points have already been made. I will say that if all we're talking about is growing tomatoes, I'd be very disappointed, but I don't think that's the case.
All right. All favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Councilmember Clark votes no, the motion passes seven to one. Thank you, Councilmember Adams for bringing this to our attention there.
Thank you.
Item five?
Item G5, Resolution Authorizing Award of Emergency Solutions Grant Funds to United Way of Forsyth County Incorporated. Finance committee forwarded this item to council with three in favor, none opposed, and one abstaining.
See, Councilmember Clark?
I'll move approval. Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed note? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item six.
Item G6, resolution fixing date for hearing on petition to close and abandon an alley off of Broad Street located in the northwest ward. Petition of Tight Line Partners LLC. Public Works Committee forwarded this item to council with three in favor, none opposed, and one abstaining.
This action tonight just sets the public hearing. I would call on Councilmember Bessie, chairman of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as you indicated, all this does is set the public hearing. I move approval.
Second.
Motion second, the Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes, is it Mr. Turner? Have all the surrounding property owners been notified? If they haven't, will they be notified of the public hearing?
They will.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed note? That is unanimous. Thank you. I want to ask Mr. Norby to make just a quick comment before I have a public comment period. There's a Great Places effort underway with our research park, and Paul, why don't you go ahead and make some?
Sorry, Mr. ... Well, I will try Plan B, if we can switch back to that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to bring to the public's attention that the American Planning Association in North Carolina is conducting its annual Great Places in North Carolina competition, and this year, a special theme is Great Historic Rehab. There were nominations made from throughout the state, and an expert panel picked six finalists to compete across the state, and I'm glad to say that Wake Forest Innovation Quarter is one of those six. But now we move into the voting stage, and the winner will be selected exclusively through a popular vote that is taking place now through February 27th. So people do that online. You can see the website down at the bottom there, www.GreatPlacesNC.org, and go there and then go to the Great Historic Rehab place on there, go to the voting page, and can place your vote there. Can also get there by searching GreatPlacesNC.org on Facebook and Twitter as well. So this is just an encouragement to everyone to vote, and get your friends to vote, too. The winner will be recognized at the General Assembly this spring, and I believe the American Planning Association is wanting to bring to the General Assembly's attention the importance of the tax credits for historic rehabilitations that have been such a key part of what's happened here as well as around the state.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Norby. I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and another little piece of good news about our Innovation Quarter. New York Times will be in town this week to do interviews and do an article on the research park, so hopefully get a little more traction on that. Councilor Burke?
I voted today, Mr. Norby.
Right.
And when I looked at that, I thought about, and I've said to the city manager on occasions, the mayor, members of the council, I don't think we talk enough about how well we are and the kinds of accomplishments we have made in this city. There have been eight, we're eight elected officials with the mayor, and we work with a lot of team effort with the leadership of the city manager and his staff, and you look at this city, and you see where we are and where we've come from. If we had not had strong people, we could have been just crippled when we lost some of the bigger businesses. But instead of us falling, councilpeople, aldermen, falling down, giving up, feeling sorry, we pushed forward, and a lot of our citizens really don't know how blessed they are in the city of Winston-Salem. And I want to say that we need to do everything we possibly can on our TV-13 to educate them on the progress we have made.
Good, good point.
Thank you.
All right, well, now I have our public comment period. This is a time, once per month, with city council, joys listening to the citizens on matters that are germane to city government. We'd ask the individuals who would like to address the council to come forward, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. And we'll begin with Leslie Wakeford.
Mayor and council members, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Leslie Wakeford. I am president of the Washington Park Neighborhood Association. The association represents 800 households in the historic district of Washington Park. All those in support of this request tonight, please stand and remain standing. I am here tonight on behalf of the association to petition the city to address the pedestrian business zoning regulations in the Washington Park Commercial Corridor along Acadia Avenue. We want the city to review, clarify, and define specific zoning regulations in the sensitive, low-density commercial areas here. We ask the city to immediately impose a moratorium of no more than nine months on the demolition of existing structures and any new construction while this review is conducted. We further request that the city assign up to two staff members who have interests and expertise in neighborhood preservation and development to work in conjunction with our association and the residents of Washington Park on this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie.
Thank you very much. Steve Lawing, excuse me.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Steve Lawing, and I reside at 115 Cascade Avenue in Washington Park. Many residents of Washington Park have literally lined their yards and the streets with signs that are opposing current zoning in our business corridor. This zoning allows and promotes construction of business that we deem detrimental to the quality of life and the property values of our historic neighborhood. Years ago, a task force was worked, worked very hard to establish a zoning that would promote neighborhood business conducive to our history and to our future. We are here as good stewards of our community, and we trust that you will be good stewards to your constituents. We ask that you immediately oppose a moratorium of all building in the Commercial Corridor of Washington Park until we have the opportunity to further study the intent of pedestrian business and implement zoning that will align with the desires of the citizens that have chosen Washington Park as their home. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Jane Johnston?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, city council members.
Good evening.
I am Jane Johnston. I live at 134 West Banner Avenue in the Washington Park area. I also own two commercial properties on Acadia Avenue, which is the area that we're talking about. I am here in support of the Neighborhood Association's petition to get an immediate moratorium on new construction and demolition on Acadia Avenue. According to Paul Norby, I think they're already, the planning board is already currently working on revisions to the neighborhood business district zoning to achieve the goals of a neighborhood-friendly zoning district that could be possibly implemented in that Washington Park area on Acadia. And we're talking on Acadia from Hollyrood down to Main, so it's that, just that section is all we're really asking for, not the entire street. The nine-month moratorium would give the planning board ample time to finish all the revisions and possibly implement what they think would be necessary to benefit our neighborhood. This moratorium, it wouldn't diminish any of the vested interests that any of the property owners have on that street. It would still allow for the leasing of any vacant properties. It would allow for the sale of any properties. It would allow for the renovation of any property, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't hinder anyone's use of their properties, this moratorium. We're just asking for a halt in new construction and demolition. So I would appreciate if you would at least consider the petition from the Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane Johnston. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? No one else had signed up, but I see a lot of folks in the audience on here for support, obviously, there. All right, well, I will close the public comment period, and I think, Councilwoman Light, did you want to make a comment in response to any of that?
Well, certainly, I would like to know from city staff, especially the city attorney, if, in fact, such a limited moratorium is legal.
It's still under review at this point in time, but right now, based upon preliminary investigations, it appears that a moratorium of that nature cannot be imposed, first of all, and then, second of all, if it is allowable, there are public hearings and notifications that are required, so it can't be immediate as suggested. But we are still looking at the issue, and we'll provide a memo to council in terms of whether or not it's lawful.
Thank you.
Well, this would be something that would be coming from the staff, probably through the general government committee, I would guess, at some point there, but Councilwoman Clark?
Good, thanks.
I just learned that you folks were coming tonight about two minutes after you got here. This is not something I'm familiar with, and I suspect there are other council members. It would be helpful if we could just get a little information about what we're talking about here, what the issues are, et cetera. I'd appreciate it.
That'd be a full report, I'm sure, there. All right, Councilwoman Burke?
We have encouraged citizens' participation, and that's why we ask them to work with us and to give us information concerning matters, and I would hope that, in listening to them, it gives me hope that citizens are looking at things in their neighborhoods, and it's important for us to listen to them. So, mayor, members of the councilmen and the councilwoman from the area, I would hope that the city manager will give us information, and that we would hope that the citizens from that area will continue to urge us to do what will be the right thing to do in that neighborhood.
Councilman McIntosh?
I would also hope that there will be dialogue with the folks who have bought the property, because even if we can't legislatively halt them, hopefully, we can create that sense of dialogue back and forth and get them to at least pull back until things are clarified and we can work through that. So hopefully, you all have started that process, and if not, I would encourage you to do that.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to offer my quick comments. I can say to the Washington Park community, I'm very inspired by seeing you here today. It means a lot to me to see the public come out and participate in the process, and that's really why I got involved. As a young man, just, you know, walked the streets, went to the schools, this is what community and government is all about, and I'm sure Councilwoman Light will be all over top of this thing. Thank you.
We add my thanks to the Washington Park Association, not only for tonight, but all the hard work that you do to preserve that wonderful historic neighborhood, and we're so grateful to have that effort in our city. You make us a much more special place, and we appreciate you being here tonight. All right, Councilwoman...
Came and out all the day.
That's right. Paul Norby asked me, Councilwoman Montgomery, don't mean to be stepping on your toes, but I guess there was a meeting tomorrow night for the east-northeast area plan, and that's been postponed to March the 17th. March 17th. Now, Councilwoman Bessie?
Thank you. Speaking of snow and postponements, there is a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night regarding Duke Energy's next tree trimming lines. This one is scheduled for the Ardmore neighborhood tomorrow evening at Miller Park Recreation Center, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Now, there are only a few lines in the Ardmore neighborhood that would be affected, and residents of those blocks should have received notice, both of the question-and-answer meeting tomorrow evening and that your street's affected. If you haven't gotten any notice, your street is probably not affected, your block's probably not affected. I have arranged with the recreation staff and with Duke Energy that if the streets are passable tomorrow evening, the meeting will go forward. We'll make a call on that about mid-afternoon, and notices will go out if the meeting is postponed. If you don't get a notice, and you're only affected blocks, that you, you know, you're notified the meeting was being held, then the meeting opportunity will be held tomorrow evening, 5:00 to 7:00. We'll let you know one way or the other.
Thank you, Councilwoman Montgomery.
It's just a comment that kind of follows what Councilmember Bessie just mentioned, and I know we had a presentation that came to Public Works Committee from Duke Energy that talked about some of the tree trimming that was going on, and they would contact councilmembers and others in those areas, and I think they have been doing that. It's just one other piece I, even in the process of you've driven down Monmouth King here, there were six trees probably older than probably most of us on council, not just me, that were gone, and I know that, you know, people have a hard time understanding, you know, what's happening in that process, but even for me, then knowing those were gone and those being posted in that process is still, when they're gone, it still surprises you when you ride through those areas.
Good point. Councilwoman Bessie?
I just, my last phrase was ill-chosen. I should have clarified. The meeting will happen unless you get a notice that it's not happening. So if you got a notice that the meeting was on, then your block was affected, and the meeting will be happening tomorrow evening unless you get a follow-up notice tomorrow afternoon saying that it's been postponed because of the snow.
Very good, thank you. Your motion to adjourn?
I move.
Motion second is adjourned. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Light.
Just a question. I know some of us have...
Excuse me, excuse me, we're not...
Some of us have a meeting with the Winston-Salem State Chancellor...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow afternoon. Is, do we know if...
Sure is still on.
As far as I know, they're still on.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed note?